Where we start our meetings officially, we have special honorary presentations. We have two today. As Council Vice President just stated, our first one is honoring Black History Month. So when she comes down, I will turn it over to her. Are we inviting members of the community up? Or just?
Yes.
Okay. So if anyone wants to come up and join the council members, I will turn it over to Vice President.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Corbell, can you join us as well?
Come down and stand right next to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much. So we have a resolution honoring Black History Month. And we'll start by reading the resolution, starting with Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President, Council Vice President. The resolution starts like this. Since 1926, the creation of Negro History Week by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the accomplishments of persons of African descent have been recognized each February. And the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments Black Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation. And Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders with special ceremonies and activities. And...
Whereas in 2016, to celebrate Black History Month, the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights introduced Future History Makers, renamed History Makers at Home, a series profile, profile series featuring emerging and mid-level careers, mid-level, excuse me, mid-career leaders from the Twin Cities African-American community who share the department's ideals of advancing civil rights and removing barriers to equity. And whereas the department identifies trendsetters in the areas of business, criminal justice, education, economic development, health, philanthropy, housing, and government, and defined them as history makers at home. And whereas the department also recognizes the kinship of work of trend-setting history makers to those who are legacy trailblazers. And...
Whereas each week throughout Black History Month, History Makers at Home shines the light on dedicated leaders in the Twin Cities region and shares the stories of those who are making a positive impact and inspiring future generations, as well as recognizes legacy leaders who paved the path. And whereas to support and foster our own History Makers at Home in the City of Minneapolis Enterprise, an employee resource group to support Black city employees, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network was created on February 23, 2017. And whereas on February 23, 2018, the Minneapolis Black Employees Network will proudly celebrate its one-year anniversary. And...
Whereas employee resource groups offer employees the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues and increase their awareness and sensitivity to differences throughout the organization and help to improve workplace culture. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers Black city employees peer support, mentoring, professional development, career counseling, and well-being supportive services. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers the City of Minneapolis recommendations on action steps to recruit, retain, support, and engage Black leaders to the city's workforce. And whereas each year, we will continue to highlight dedicated Black leaders in the City of Minneapolis and the Twin Cities region. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council and the City of Minneapolis that we commemorate the achievements of Black Americans as history makers and trailblazers in their role in the development and the history of the region and the nation. And we join in recognizing the annual celebration of Black History Month and the anniversary of the Minneapolis Black Employee Network. And I just want to do a special acknowledgement of this year's Black History Maker Honoree, Ms. Camille Thomas. So congratulations on being on that honor.[299.14][299.14][applause] And so now I will present the official resolution to Civil Rights Director Velma Corbell. Did you want to say anything?
I would just say thank you to President Bender, Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins, and all of the council members. Worsami, Cunningham, Ellison, thank you very much for reading the resolution. Thank you to all of you who've been here. Thank you to the City Council for supporting and approving the Minneapolis Black Employee Network. This means a lot to your Black employees, but it also means a lot to all of your employees to see how supportive you can be of this cultural group. And in celebration of Black History Month, I would stand up here, I would be remiss if I didn't say it's always Black History Month.[353.11][353.11][laughter] So thank you to the council and thank you to all of you. Happy Black History Month.
Yes. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. We have a second honorary resolution, which is honoring our city coordinator Spencer Kronk, who is coming to, who is leaving us for Austin, Texas. It's terrible. So we're going to present him this resolution. I'll go ahead and read it here. And it will speak for itself. And we also do have a celebration for Spencer later this morning, so I hope everyone will attend. And does anyone else want to join us from the staff? We're good. Okay. This is a resolution honoring Spencer Kronk as he departs from the bold north of Minneapolis, Minnesota, to the quirky south of Austin, Texas.[411.94][411.94][laughter] I couldn't help but edit that as a little zing to our colleagues in Austin. Whereas Spencer Kronk, the city coordinator for the City of Minneapolis, joined the city in 2014 after serving as Commissioner of the State of Minnesota Department of Administration. And whereas Spencer Kronk has provided leadership and direction in managing the City of Minneapolis Enterprise and implementing the mayor and city council's priorities. And whereas under Mr. Kronk's leadership, the city leveraged and strengthened public and private partnerships to launch new and historic initiatives, such as the Clean Energy Partnership, the 20-year Neighborhood Park and Street Infrastructure Ordinance, and the creation of the Municipal Paid Sick and Safe Time and $15 minimum wage ordinances. And whereas Mr. Kronk's leadership heralded a new wave of grant-funded initiatives aimed at helping the city address complex and pressing challenges that contribute to racial disparities, such as the creation of the Minneapolis Innovation Team and the resilience work funded through the Rockefeller Foundation's 100 Resilient Cities Initiative, as well as the healing work funded through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration's Resilience in Communities After Stress and Trauma Initiative. And whereas Mr. Kronk's leadership refocused the use of data to provide greater transparency into city operations and led to the development of tools, such as the Spend Diversity Dashboard and the Workforce Dashboard, which hold the enterprise accountable to its living values of diversity and equity. And whereas Mr. Kronk's unfailing support of our most vulnerable communities helped expand the city's protection of the transgender and gender nonconforming residents, as well as led the city's efforts in becoming a welcoming city for all our residents, including our immigrant and refugee communities. And whereas Mr. Kronk worked in partnership with the Minnesota Super Bowl Host Committee and numerous city staff and local partners to ensure that the Super Bowl is a successful, world-class event that brought positive spotlight on Minneapolis. And whereas Mr. Kronk has improved relationships among the city and dozens of individuals and organizations, including the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, the Downtown Council, the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority, the Final Four Committee, the State of Minnesota and Hennepin County. And whereas Mr. Kronk's steady leadership in difficult times will be missed by city staff who truly appreciated the intentional creation of space in which to hold difficult conversations of local and national magnitude, while ensuring that all residents receive the services they need from the city. And whereas Mr. Kronk's collaborative work with our labor representatives has helped create a better working experience for our public employees and has led to the FSAM Committee's efforts to create several new and remodeled workplaces, including a consolidated office building, the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility, the In Pound Lot Facility, numerous fire stations and police precincts, and City Hall. And whereas Mr. Kronk has modeled and exemplified the nobility of public service and used his time to actively champion public service by visiting with new employees at every new employee orientation. And whereas Mr. Kronk will be trading in his parka for a pair of cowboy boots, benefiting his new adventure. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Spencer Kronk is hereby commended for his dedication and exemplary service to the City of Minneapolis, presented with deep gratitude and appreciation by the mayor and city council members for his outstanding leadership and commitment to our city. Thank you so much.[613.11][613.11][applause]
Congratulations. Well, I'm going to miss you.
Not everyone gets a standing ovation. And I think that, I just want to say that with all of the things and the details, I mean, who doesn't love having a dashboard as their legacy?[650.82][650.82][laughter] You know, your service and your legacy in Minneapolis goes so much farther than these words could have captured. And you just brought such a beautiful, quiet, collaborative leadership to this position. Our city is changed because of your leadership. And you helped manage us through a time of huge change of culture in our departments, in our city, with 10 new council members out of 13. And I just have so deeply appreciated your leadership, Spencer. And we'd love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you so much, Council President Bender and council members. It has been a true honor to be able to be your coordinator over the last four years. And as you know, these positions aren't individuals alone. We are an incredible community that's surrounded by such dedicated and committed employees. And I have just had the honor and privilege of working with so many of you over the last four years. And I just thank you for what you have done for the city. I know that there are going to be great things to come with this council, this new mayor. And I just look forward to seeing what those new things will be from down south. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that.[726.07][726.07][applause]
Thank you. Okay. Good morning. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And I'm going to call this regular meeting of the City Council of February 9th to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kano is absent. Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum for today's meeting. The next item is the adoption of our agenda. We have a few changes. First, I have a motion to add under the Order of Resolutions, the honorary resolution we just presented to our city coordinator Spencer Kronk. Second, Councilmember Palmasano has a motion to postpone for one cycle the honorary resolution on multiple sclerosis awareness. And third, Councilmember Ellison has a motion to add, under the Order of Motions, the creation of a special committee to make recommendations about potential amendments to council rules related to public outreach and engagement. This motion relates to the report from the Elections and Rules Committee that was discussed at Cal on Wednesday. Are there any other amendments to add at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda with those amendments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries and the agenda is adopted. The next item is the acceptance of minutes from the meetings of January 8th and 26th. May I please have a motion?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries and those minutes are accepted. Next is the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. The next order of business is reports of the standing committees, beginning with Committee of the Whole, chaired by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings one item of business forward this morning, that is the expiration of ordinances and resolutions from the previous four-year term. The clerk's office has distributed an updated list at the dais this morning showing those matters that will be reintroduced at the request of a city council member and the referral to the proper committee in our new operating structure. I would move approval of the committee's reports and recommended actions.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved the Committee of the Whole's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 items.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee by the committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing five items forward for approval this morning. Items one and two are new business licenses. Item three are our regular liquor gambling and business licenses. Item four is the annual report for the McPhail School of Music. And item five is our Great Streets Facade Improvement Grant Program, listing a number of funding awards. With that, I'll move items number one through five for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Elections and Rules Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Ellison.
The Elections and Rules Committee has one item to carry forward. It's the passage of a resolution adopting the 2018 provision as the definitive Minneapolis City Council rules of order. I move to adopt this change.
Councilmember Ellison has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Enterprise Committee, given by the committee's chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have just one item to bring forward through council this time around. It's a contract amendment with Viterian for ERP reporting services. It's a contract extension of one year.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, the report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Community Engagement Committee, given by the committee's chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, President Bender. The Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward two items. The first is a grant from the Public Health Institute to address health and climate change in Minneapolis. And the second is the Minnesota Department of Health Grant for Minneapolis Adolescent Sexual Health. This is a grant for $156,000 decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors associated with Minneapolis adolescent sexual health. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham, did you want to make an announcement about the next?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to share with colleagues that this upcoming Monday, on the 12th, at 1:30, the Civil Rights Department will be presenting the disparity study report. So that presentation will be available. So I recommend for folks to come check it out or watch it, as well as we will be having the NCR African-American Community Cultural Specialist coming in to give an overview of his work and the current state of the Black community in Minneapolis in honor of Black History Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Cunningham has moved the report. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee from the committee chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward two items. The first is a modification to a contract with Ellie Mae for Loan Administration Software Services. And the second is approving an award of affordable housing trust funds for the New Vision Housing Project at 2101 South Fifth Street. I will move both items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the Report of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, presented by councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee is bringing forward one item today on our report. It is amending our state legislative agenda and policy positions to support a funding request for rehabilitation and preservation of the Stone Arch Bridge, and I'm happy to move that report.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the Transportation and Public Works Committee chaired by councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee submits six items today for council approval. Item 1 is the Bicycle Advisory Committee appointment. Item 2 is the 2018 Street Reservicing Program designation and cost estimates. Item 3 is a request for a proposal for the Litter Begone Event Services. Item 4 is the contract amendment with Coen Partners for historic preservation and architectural landscape design services for PB Plaza. Item 5 is a bid for the East River Road Railroad Crossing Project. Item 6 is the bid for the Broadway Street Northeast Reconstruction Project. Madam President, I submit all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano. Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the Ways and Means Committee report, given by councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has nine items to bring forward. The first item is a legal settlement claimed by the city of Minneapolis against Alliance Steel for damage to fire department equipment. The second item is a legal settlement citation from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry Occupational Safety and Health Division. The third item is a legal settlement claims, workers' compensation legal settlement claims of James Breen, John Gable, Donald Switzer, and Raymond Tomlinson. The fourth item is a legal settlement claim of Harold Collier. Fifth item is a grant from the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District to fund Downtown 100 and Focus. The sixth item is appropriation resolution amendment for the acceptance of the prosecutorial services to crime victims grant for 2018-19. The seventh item is a contract amendment with Versicon Inc. for contract closeout of the Convention Center West Entrance Landscape Project. The eighth item is a contract amendment with the Lawyte Consulting LLP for benefits and consulting actuarial services. And the final item is an appointed position in the Health Department Deputy Commissioner of Health, and I move approval of all items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the reports of special committees, and we have one item from the executive committee. I'll recognize council vice president Jenkins to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The executive committee moves forward one item this morning. We are bringing forward a new position titled Director of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs to be in the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. That would be referred to the Ways and Means Committee for its review and recommendation in the next cycle of the full council. I move approval of that item, Madam President.
Thank you. Vice President Jenkins has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Notice of Ordinance introductions. We have just one. I am giving notice of an introduction to amend the code related to workplace regulations, clarifying the rules for accrual and use of sick and safe time. That notice is given, and there's no vote on those. There are 24 items on today's introduction and referral calendar. The first item pursuant to notice is the introduction, first reading, and referral of the subject matter of an ordinance related to procedures for setting or changing compensation levels for the mayor and city council members. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. The remainder of the calendar consists of those ordinances that are being re-referred back to proper committees as the result of the action on the report from the Committee of the Whole. I won't read the whole list, but it includes items 2 through 4, all of which are presented as recommended by the Committee of the Whole at the meeting this past Wednesday. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
Just in terms of the entire list, there's a half slip of paper with an amendment related to item number 6 and also item number 19. These both have to do with an introduction that was made last term, having to do with regulations for places for adult entertainment. The only change is that instead of referring them to Economic Development and Regulatory Services, after discussing that with the chairs of the two committees, we decided it's more appropriate that it goes to the Health Committee, both of those items, because that's where it was before. So, I'd like to make that, I guess, as an amendment, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
Thank you, councilmember Gordon. Is there any further discussion? Then, on the motion including councilmember Gordon's amendments, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and those ordinances are re-referred to the proper committees starting in the next cycle. The next order of business is resolutions. We have four on the agenda.[1299.08]